We are recording.
All right, so we're recording live on Facebook. Excellent. All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, April 17th, 2023. The time I have is 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. A reminder, if you do speak, please speak directly in the microphone because we are recording this. At this time, I would look for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We had a motion by trustee Rodden to approve and a second. Sorry, the motion was by trustee Schneider to approve and a second by trustee Romas. Is there any questions or discussion from the board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero. At this time, let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Okay. Off to item number five. Item number five, public appearances. At this time, anyone in the public wishing to address the village board, please come forward, provide your name, your address. Let us know what's on your mind. Be aware that anything that you bring forward this evening would be on a future agenda. It could be referred back to staff for review. If you are here for items that are on the agenda, we will give you a chance to speak if you wish. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on an item not on this evening's agenda?
If I'm a member of the public. I did the mailbox program today. They put in a post for me and they did a really nice job.
You're welcome.
Well, for pod.
Did we save the flowers?
What was it?
Did we save the flowers?
Yeah, but you know, I was hoping I put up something really nice last year. It was just tulips, so. But they still did. No, no, they didn't. They're fine.
Thank you.
All right. Well, this meeting's starting off on a very positive note. Okay. No other public appearances. So moving on to item number six, the consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of previous minutes of the village board dated four, three, 2023, February 2023 animal control report. Item C, March 2023 fire department report. Item D, March 2023 municipal court report. Item E, March 2023 recreation report. Item F is a temporary amendment to the four-way bar and restaurant for a Class B combination liquor license to include a tent area in the back parking lot at 1801 Riverside Drive on June 10th, 2023, from noon to 7:00 PM. Item G is a temporary Class B picnic license for St. Edward and Isidore Church Harvest Fest. Item H is a temporary Class B picnic license, picnic licenses for the Howard Swamaco Youth Sports Association for the dates, one, June 16th and 18th, 2023, at Calavera and Idlewild Park. Item two, July 21 through 23, 2023, at Calavera and Idlewild Parks. And item three, July 27th through 30th, 2023, at Calavera and Idlewild Parks. Is there any comment or discussion on the items on the consent agenda?
Just a comment on, on H? Oh, no, go ahead. Ladies first. Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Dan. Page two of the minutes. I, it says motion carried unanimously, six to one. Can you just scratch the unanimously?
Absolutely.
Thank you. On, on page three, with, the motion was made, okay, to approve the resolution authorizing the borrowing not to exceed. Can we say what we're, like, Tiff District for sewer extension? Or can we, can we say why? And, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Dan?
H, temporary Class B licenses for HISA. I just want to touch base. Nick, did we get financials on Wednesday?
We did.
Really? Full financials or chicken scratch financials?
Chicken scratch financials, but we also got the monthly, so we can kind of see, kind of follow it through.
Okay.
But we've got the expenses and the revenue as far as registrations and then what is paid out in umpires, uniforms, trophies, concessions, is not real clear, but.
Never is.
But like I said, we do have the monthly, so we can keep it going. Every month, they provide the financials, so you can kind of see, follow it through monthly versus just year end. And I'll make sure that I keep collecting those.
And then they are officially a nonprofit?
Correct.
That all got worked out?
They show up on the website.
Finally. I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda. Sorry?
Item six C, just a quick question. Bayport wrestling team to state, can you explain what that was?
So we do, anytime the Bayport team does basketball, football, semi wrestling, we escort them to basically the highway. They ask us along with the police department to go to the highway.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple of comments, then if I could, or questions for Recreation Director Lemke. So the guided meditation class held on Thursday, March 23rd, how many did you have attend that one?
I think we had three re-registrations.
Okay.
For that one. Kind of, you know, we do it monthly. The most we've had is eight, and then sometimes it's two, you know, so it kind of varies each month.
And there's no cost to the village on that, obviously?
No, no, we, we collect revenue, we make revenue.
Yeah, so I mean.
Not much, obviously, but a little bit.
Yeah, but I mean, it fills time and it gives folks something to do. I mean, it's important.
Realize it's this room a little bit more, so.
Yeah. Also, so created new partnership program with the fire soccer club. I, I think that's great. You know, I can't believe we've not had that partnership before. So kudos to you on that. And then the last one, I remember we had a lot of discussion amongst this board, I think it was last year, was the inaugural year for the garden plots. So those garden plots, 11 plot holders, two new additional residents, are they all Swamaco residents who've taken advantage of that?
Yeah, yep, yep.
Is there a waiting list developed for that at all?
I actually do have one person on the waiting list.
Is there, is there actual room to expand that at all?
Probably a better question for Andy, but yeah, I would like to, but there's some tricks out there. The soil behind the building is not the best. It's got more of a sinkhole, it's very wet. So we probably have to look at another location if we want to add more in the future.
I just wonder how much more demand is out there, you know, I mean, and of course, we, we, it would have to pay for itself, obviously.
Yeah, I would say currently, there's not that much more demand, but obviously, if we moved it around to a different location, there could be, I don't know, but it really works well out there with the well.
Yeah.
For a water source, it's under lock and key, so.
Well, at some point, we might reach a, a, a place where the 11 plot holders are the same 11 plot holders for the last three years, and then at that point, I think we've got an indication that we've got, and if that, that waitlist develops, but I mean, with one person on there, that's not a huge waitlist, but anyway. I think it's great. I'm glad we, we have that. That's neat that folks can go and do that.
Where does the money, the money you get from that, where does that go?
It goes back into the rec.
It goes to the rec, or is it, it doesn't go to the sewer utility because it's there?
No, it's rec revenue. Because my water source is unmetered, so.
Okay.
That's all I had.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So we have a motion from trustee Rodden to approve this evening's consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from trustee Schneider. Any further comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Item number seven, parks and recreation items. Item A, approve, reject, resolution two, three, zero, one, one, amending the village of Swamaco comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Director Lemke?
Thank you. The village contract with MSA Professional Services Incorporated to amend the village of Swamaco was comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Current plan was from 2013 to 2017. Found other key components that were added to the plan, some demographics, current and projected, goals one and eight, referencing the Calavera Springs Master Plan and the newest trails plan. Updated some of the references to the newest trails plan, updated some of the appended, appendices, left in the 2013 information due to its use of the original goals and recommendations. At our past park and recreation forestry trails committee that we had on Tuesday, April 11th, the committee voted unanimously, unanimous, easy for me to say.
Ananimously.
Unanimously, to amend the village of Swamaco comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. And the village grant writer also has reviewed the amended corp, and he feels that it's applicable to, to be applied for future state and federal grants, which is mainly the main reason that we are doing this is through amended corp, so whether we have the ability to apply for some of those grants that may be available. Information included in the plan is intended as a guide, visionary document for the village when considering future trail and park developments. The when, how, if, the recommendations are implemented will be decided on by the village. Adoption of the plan does not obligate the village to any specific project. And Danielle Westling is here from MSA. She's got a brief presentation that she would like to show you.
I've got a question. Does, does Knight Rider snowmobile club still exist?
Probably not.
It's, it's on there yet.
Yep, and so the contract to amend the, this plan was to provide the Calavera Master Plan and to include the trails plan. So that was the most cost-sufficient way that we could do it. Once you start getting into some of those more updated changes, and Diane was actually gracious enough to make some of those, she kind of went above the scope of the project, then you kind of get more into developing a whole new comprehensive plan. And your, obviously, your price goes up.
Yikes.
So that's one of the things, yes, there is going to be some outdated information in the plan, but the main reason for the amendment was, again, to include the master plan, the trails plan, so that if grants are available, it's, it's in the plan. Because those grants are going to be specifically for the master plan and the trail, so that's really all they're going to be considering. They don't, if the snowmobile club's still there, Duck Creek Football, that really doesn't have much reference at all, standpoint of amendment, so. But I'll let Diane kind of fill in a little bit more on that as well.
Is this presentation just for tonight, or is that included anywhere in the master plan? This is just tonight?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't follow what you meant, what you were asking.
Is this presentation that you're giving, this seven-slide deck here, just for tonight?
Right.
Okay.
And it was given to the Parks Committee, Parks Recreation Forestry Committee last week.
All right. Just having Pop Warner on there still, they don't, they don't exist anymore.
Oh, actually, we, we got some of the photos from, we, we had done, MSA, our company, did the economic development cut sheets for the village, and so some of those were photos that we, we still had from when we did that. I think that was last year or the year before. So, but yes, this is just for tonight, so there's, there's no, none of these photos are in the, actually, I, I think that might have been where it could have been too, from, taken from the plan. So first, just as, as Nick said, you know, the, the purpose of the comprehensive outdoor recreation plans are, it's really to guide the decisions related to park and recreation development. It's a plan only, so it does not commit the village to any of these. It's just to guide the future development. And so the comprehensive outdoor recreation plans, they are required to be current in order to be eligible for a lot of the state and federal park and recreation grant programs. And when I say current, it's, they, they are required to be a five-year planning period, and as Nick had said, I believe yours was 2013 to 2017.
Yep, that's correct.
And whatever project, if you are seeking grant funding, the project that you're seeking the grant funding for has to be in that plan in order to be eligible. So as Nick had said, is that's, what really prompted this update is because anything that's in that Calavera Master Plan or the trail plan would not be eligible for grants unless this was updated. And actually, nothing else would be eligible for grants unless this is updated because it's not current. So that's why the village engaged MSA was to do this small amendment to make it to the point where the village would be eligible for applying for these grants if you so choose in the future. So the, the original vill, or the last Village of Swamaco Outdoor Recreation and Open Space Plan, that's what it's titled, but it, it serves as the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. It was for the period of 2013 through 2017, and it includes the inventory of current facilities that has not changed. That's, you know, as Nick had mentioned, that the primary thing was to include those two, those, the Calavera Springs Master Plan and the trail plan. So this stuff all stayed the same. The inventory, the goals, objectives, a needs and analysis, the needs and analysis, the needs analysis.
It's going around tonight.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that.
It's a wager. It's the cold weather.
Recommendations and an implementation plan, all of those stayed the same from the original, or the plan in 2013 to 2017. That original plan was led by the Swamaco Park Recreation Forestry and Trails Committee, and it was adopted in 2013, a public informational meeting, a public information meeting was held prior to the adoption, and it was adopted by resolution in 2013. So why amend? It's really because you're, you're not eligible for any of those grant funds. So we wanted to make sure that you are eligible if and when the village chooses to apply for grant funding in order to implement their, the plan. And so the amendment, the changes that were made, they, they were minimal because it was just to get the, get you eligible, and so it incorporated the 2018 Calavera Springs Master Plan, the 2020, actually, I think it's 2022 Swamaco Trail Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan, updated the demographics. The original, the last plan was based on 2010 census. We updated those to be about the 20, with the 2020. And then the standards with the National Recreation Park Association Agency has changed from 2013, so we updated those as well. And then at the last meeting with the Parks Recreation Forestry Committee, we went through all of the actions that are identified in the 2013 through 2017 plan, and the committee identified those that have been completed. So we also identified those in the plan to acknowledge that they've been completed. And as Nick said, it, it, it's, the intent is to make the village eligible for state and federal, federal funding for projects that are in the plan, and it does not commit the village to implementing any of the, any of the recommendations that are, or projects that are identified in the plan. It's just to make the village eligible and to guide the vision for the future. And, and it, so it sets the table for funding and implementation, and I, I believe it was brought up before about if the recommendations changed. That's one thing that the village should consider is that, you know, it was adopted 10 years ago, so it is an older plan, so this, I know the Village of Swamaco especially, compared to some of the communities we work in, does have a changing, you know, is growing. So it, it is something that I would suggest that you look at updating more thoroughly in the near future, getting the input from the community, because this has just, just strictly got you eligible. So just something to consider. You know, you may want to incorporate a new needs analysis, because if you've got a lot of these projects done, then, you know, then what's the next step, kind of thing? So, but that's it for this amendment. So if there's any questions?
Well, I guess, I'm, I'm not a state and federal grant fan, so I'm, I'm not really for this. I, it disturbs me a little, exploring, building a pool or water sports facility, another community park on Norfield and 41, skateboarding, frisbee golf, splash pad, trail along the water, sledding hill. I'm, I'm not for this plan.
Those, those are actually recommendations that are currently in place because that was from the 2013 plan that was adopted. So regardless of this amendment, if, if this amendment to update it with the new information, the new census information and the new plans, the rest of the, of those recommendations still are in the plan, because they were in the original, or in the 2013 plan.
So that seems to me to be reason why we need to take a, a more thorough review of this comprehensive plan, because all of those items were in as of 2013, and here we are 10 years later, and we all know that the splash pad has been, you know, an ongoing, somewhat humorous.
That's just more money for a plant to use anyway, so.
But what I'm saying is, the plan is so out of date, that's why all these items are still in there. That's a good reason why we need to.
Well, they should have never put a pool. They should have never put splash pad.
I mean, one way to fix it is.
I, I mean.
Well, that was done back in 13.
I probably voted against it then.
You were on the board anyways. You probably did, but.
I, I know I did.
So, you know, maybe.
And it wasn't, I wasn't the one that said, put that in there, believe me.
The point is, I think Diane was saying that.
Yeah.
If, if we, if she, if they have to go in and strike all this stuff, it involves spending a lot more money to redo it.
Yeah, I'm not for that either.
Well, and I would say, and, and at that point, that's where you'd want the community involvement, where, and that's why we, we didn't want to change anything in there, because that was based on, you know, the community involvement, or the community engagement process that happened back in 13, you know, the public informational one. So we didn't want to do anything, make any changes to it that would, you know, that hasn't already been seen by the public. And in the case of the Calavera Master Plan and the trail plan, both of those have already been adopted. So the only thing that's in this amendment that has not been, you know, seen by the public is just the update of the census data. You know, so it's nothing controversial, nothing, you know, no new recommendations, no suggestions on what to do, because we wanted to make sure that it was completely neutral on that until or unless there was a opportunity for public engagement. So it was strictly for the purpose of making it updated for now, so that it was eligible. And I know that the, the Village of Swamaco, I should say, I, I'm pretty sure the Village of Swamaco has used those grant funds in the past, the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Fund in order to purchase property. So it, it is a commonly used grant program.
So I, I just think for reasons that, that were pointed out, that this is sort of outdated, this comprehensive plan, we should get it on the map to, to review it, and I think that we have some data that we've collected in the recent survey that could contribute to, you know, updating that plan and taking it forward. I don't have any problems with this amendment. In fact, I'm thankful for it because it does update the demographic information, and to me, that makes a big difference. I, I don't, I, I don't disagree with you, but I don't necessarily share your perspective on, on the grant process. Grants are, grants are a common tool used throughout, some organizations wouldn't exist at all if it weren't for grants, and some organizations and positions, I employ five people that are under a Center for Disease Control grant for three years. They wouldn't exist or have the training or anything that they're getting if it hadn't been for that grant. So I, I do believe in grants, and I do support, you know, grants. I, not all of them, but I think they should be looked at. So I, I'm, I'm for this amendment, but I would like to see a note, go back to look at the comprehensive plan.
Well, and if I may, I, just for a little reference, is actually, I, I didn't work, or I kind of finished up the project because it was my colleague who started it, but unfortunately, she had to take a unplanned leave of absence, and so I stepped in for her. I'm also a planner. But I, that's why I brought Alexa here, is because she's the planner from MSA that in the future would work on any kind of project like that. But my point is, my job primarily at MSA is on funding, and so it's not only the, you know, while it's a requirement for a lot of the federal and state grants, it all, also, I write grants a lot, so it, having this in place also is, really makes writing grants for, say, private foundations a lot easier, because the information, we can show that it's been planned. So it's a requirement for the state and federal, but it's very much a tool for the other ones that don't have as many strings, shall we say?
Yeah, and speaking of grants, I mean, when we did the, at Fireman's Park with the canoe kayak launch, I mean, we received a, a grant for that project, and that whole project has been received very well by the public.
Are there other comments or questions?
Well, if there isn't any, I'll make a motion to approve resolution two, three, zero, one, one, amending the Village of Swamaco 2023 Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan.
So we have a motion on the floor by trustee Andrews to approve resolution two, three, zero, one, one, amending the Village of Swamaco Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from trustee Ward. Any further discussion or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Item seven B, approve, reject bids for Calavera Park Soccer Fields. Director Lemke?
Thank you. Agenda item was tabled during the April 3rd village board meeting. We've, we've already discussed at this meeting, just a quick recap of the project, is proposed to put seven new soccer fields at Calavera Park Spring, Calver Springs Park, and that estimated cost for that project in '22 was $153,200. Bid opening for the project was on March 20th, received six bids, with McKeefery and Sons having the lowest bid amount of $278,857. We had an alternate lowest bid of $177,809.32 received by Michael's Corporation, which included the Village of Swamaco trucking and providing the fill, and that was an additional estimated cost of $53,765, which brings that total alternative bid cost to $231,574.32. Allocated funding for the project is at $178,938, which, through the math, remaining funds needed for the base bid would be $99,919, with the alternate bid of $52,636.32. Potential funding sources, you can see the remaining balances for the stadium district tax fund, public work sinking fund, and the trail development fund. Further request of the village board trustees, finance director was going to present and discuss the timeline regarding the expenditures of the collected park impact fees.
So I will act as the finance director tonight. You all should have received earlier last week a spreadsheet that shows you the park impact fees, a reminder that we collect $300 per REU whenever there's a CSM or a plat, and those fees that are collected must be spent within 10 years, otherwise they have to be returned to the property owner with interest. So the concern is always, do you, do you spend it within those 10 years or not? We looked back and were able to determine that the next expiring impact fees that we currently still have would be not until 2027. So we do have some time before any park impact fees would expire. And then you can go through that spreadsheet and, and see, you know, exactly which date and the amount that they expire. So that's the, the summary from the park impact fee perspective.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Director Lemke? No? Are there questions for Park and Rec Director Lemke?
I don't have a question for him, but I know there was some discussion last week about wanting to raise more funds for this, and I will just make a comment that Nick and I went out on Tuesday and we hit up 17 businesses and tried to generate, raising a little money, a little awareness for the park and all. And Nick did some on his own. I don't know how many did he actually hit on his own, but we, we did some, and we're hoping that some of those businesses come forward with banners at least, or, you know, some form of donations. I believe there was two.
Two commitments, yeah, to just informational, spread in, and then mail in. We also did a mail-in too earlier in the year, and then like Steve said, we kind of went up, followed up with some of the businesses and reached some of the ones, and we just didn't say in Swamaco either. We went to Howard and a couple businesses there, so, because obviously, it's Howard Swamaco kids that use those fields primarily.
So there is some pending, potential pending funding?
Yeah.
Problem with impact fees is you got to use it on newer things, and the problem with that is, then in the long term, you got to maintain all these things, like a soccer field. Like a soccer field. That would be a little more minimal, wouldn't it, for ongoing maintenance?
I would think so. Currently, the club takes care of lining the fields. They agreed to do the same for this project. So, once the sods laid out and ready for play, they'll come and line it, they paint it, and our guys cut it. They provide the goals, they provide the nets.
Mm-hmm.
Equipment.
I mean, I personally don't like it, but I don't have to.
Yep.
I, I like that. I don't know. I mean, is this too soon? You, you said there isn't a real major need for it right now.
Well, there is to a point. I mean, there's.
Regarding the master plan is what, I mean, that's, you know, we're, that's, we're trying to move it forward. You know, this is part of that Phase One. The parking lot had, already has been extended, expansion there. So, that money was spent for that parking lot to set up for parking for these fields. The stormwater retention plan is done. Soccer has their storage in place. They pay for that, which is just by the tennis court. Again, the position of that storage field, that storage shed is in anticipation of these, of these soccer fields. We put it within the Phase One. You get through Phase One, then it clears out those soccer fields on the south side for the, the baseball fields.
What storage shed?
The Fire Soccer Storage Shed. It's right on.
There's a small shed right south of the tennis courts.
Just one that you pick up and move around? Okay.
Like an Amish shed, soccer shed, garden shed.
Nick, can you share how much the soccer fields are being used presently?
Yeah. So, the club that basically uses Amish from three years old to adults. The fields are used every day, May through June, four to five times a week in July through August, and then back to every day for the fall season, September through October. Obviously, they're not playable in November, January, February.
If we're sharing information, Nick, do you want to share the information or do you have the information on, on their, the people that are actually part of their club and, and who those people are? Because from what I understand, a lot of those are from Pulaski as well. So, it's not just Howard Swamaco. It's, last time I looked at those numbers, the majority of them were from Swamaco and outside of this area. Do you have the newest numbers?
I don't have the breakdown.
Their, their enrollment numbers? That'd be good to have as well.
The enrollment numbers is a guy right around two hundred.
Right.
Individuals.
So, if you want to talk about soccer club, you know, and I'm not comparing soccer clubs, but a soccer club that is Wisconsin Loons, you're thousands of kids. And a lot of those kids are from the Howard Swamaco area as well. So, this is a very, we talk about soccer clubs, this is a very small soccer club comparative to the other soccer clubs that compete competitively across the state of Wisconsin.
Yeah.
And, and the Loons don't need these fields as of now.
Just as for discussion, would improving the fields attract some of the talent from the Loons to the other?
No. No. And those fields over here, are, are they being used all summer?
Those old football fields?
Right.
Not currently, no.
So, we have three, three fields or two fields? Three?
There's two.
Two fields over there that aren't being used, that could, that could actually house a full-size soccer field?
Most.
The trouble with those fields, though, are the crown, you know, so you typically don't want that for soccer. I mean, yeah, they could be used for soccer, but they're not.
The director of the Wisconsin Loons looked at those fields and said they were beautiful. Perfect. And I, I don't mean to.
And again, it's not a burning desire of the need or the want. It's getting back to the master plan that we're either going to bowel center capital improvement plan or we're just not going to go forward with it. You know, we have been soliciting for funds. We do have over thirty thousand dollars raised for this project. I've been directed to raise money for this project. So, I guess maybe the bigger question is, are we going to move forward with this or, or not? And we'll have to find out what we're going to have to do with that, that sponsorship money.
See, the, the bigger project is, is not just the soccer fields. It's moving the soccer fields up to that different location with another phase later on, putting the two ball diamonds down where the soccer fields are. That's, that's the scope of this whole project.
It's developing the park.
Well, that's what I was going to say is that we shouldn't be focused on, are we adding more soccer fields? Because that's not the intent. We're not looking to add more soccer field space. It's to ultimately have more ball diamond space. That's where we're feeling a crunch. Or at least back in twenty eighteen, nineteen, that was the perception. And that's why they adopted that plan. So, you're, you're really not, like, advocating for more soccer field space? That's not.
No, I understand that you're moving them and eventually putting ball diamonds in. I think the expansion of the parking lot wasn't just for the soccer fields. That was mostly for the softball fields and the, and the baseball that happens there because that parking lot is jam-packed during, during tournaments. I, I understand what the master plan is. I, I fully get it. I just, again, you know, you just said it tonight in your note. The when, how, if the recommendations are implemented, will be decided by the village. Adoption of the plan does not obligate the village to any project. You know, so it doesn't obligate us to say that we need to do this project. And just because we can, doesn't mean we should. You know, and, and that's just my opinion. You know, the, there's not this burning need, to my knowledge, that we need another softball diamond or a baseball diamond. I don't, I don't hear hiss of screaming saying we need more ball diamonds. They just added another ball diamond at Askonover or whatever it's called now. Those are, and the last thing is, have we ever talked to the neighbors to the north and to the, to the east of this?
Yes, we have. We sat down in twenty eighteen when this was drafted with, right out at Calavera Park in the shelter. And we've invited all the neighbors to attend the Park and Rec meeting that we held there. And they were for the soccer fields. They were not for ball diamonds to go in that spot. Because with the ball diamonds, potentially later on, there would be lights. And they didn't want the lights close to them. So, the neighbors, they saw this plan just as you see it, and they were supportive of it.
But not supportive of the ball diamonds?
Correct.
So, they were supportive of the move of the soccer fields, but not necessarily the installation of the additional ball diamonds because of the lighting?
Correct.
No, the way you explained it, they don't want the ball diamonds in their backyard because of the potential lights.
Yes.
They're good with the ball diamonds expanding up by the county highway.
Where they are on this plan?
Yes, yes.
So, where the ball diamonds are on this plan, the neighbors were okay with?
Correct.
Without the lights.
So, you know, one, one observation, you know, in our previous discussions, the discussion was, well, we really don't need more soccer fields. From what I heard this evening is the soccer fields that are in place are, are going to be moved. So, we're not adding additional soccer fields. And the soccer fields that are currently in place are, are utilized to their maximum potential. That's my understanding. The, the surplus that we have in soccer fields is two unmarked, unused potential fields in Idlewild Park. And there's some contention on whether the dirt is, the field is good field or bad field regardless. So, that's really the, the surplus question. I guess the, the question this evening then isn't about, do we want this money to build additional soccer field capacity if anything? It's, do we want to utilize this money to build additional baseball diamond capacity? And what's necessary to do that is to first move the soccer fields. And that's part of our comprehensive plan. So, what this all boils down to, at least in my mind, is, is the comprehensive plan that was voted on, I'm assuming this voted, this board voted on it in addition to Park and Rec. Was the comprehensive plan that was put in place to move these soccer fields, add these baseball diamonds, is it still relevant in twenty twenty-three as it was relevant in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
And we just voted to amend it. This, this plan is in the, the amended comprehensive plan that we just voted on.
We, we voted to amend it, but what I'm saying is, is the plan in twenty eighteen that cast these additional, future for additional baseball diamonds contingent on the move of soccer fields, do we still need these baseball diamonds and is it still necessary? Do, if, do we still need these baseball diamonds? Because if we don't need these baseball diamonds, it's not necessary to move the soccer fields at this time. And the, my other question also is, what other needs, what other needs are needed at our parks? You know, you look at some of their expenditures and, and it was actually a good graph that Kate put together of our expenditures and what we use them on. You know, ADA compliance stuff, that's important. Do we have all the ADA, you know, we, we talk about doing new fencing eventually out here. You know, so there's some other things that need to happen. You know, are we going to, what are we getting the funds for that? So, if we expend all seventy-three thousand dollars in our unassigned park impact fees, how are we going to pay for other upgrades as they come along in these parks? Our new items? We have to rely on additional development, which, we have one additional development?
I could be wrong on this, but with replacing the fencing, I don't believe the parkland fees qualify for that because you're replacing.
It says right here.
I mean, I could be wrong. Alex, I, you have that.
It's always been my understanding that the park impact fees have to be used for new capital. They can't be used to replace existing.
So, in twenty seventeen, Idlewild Park fencing, we spent twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Was that new or was that replaced?
We replaced all that fencing. It was replacement of fencing.
Replacement.
I don't think you are supposed to.
Did we use parkland dedication fees for that? Right here. We expended twenty-eight thousand, six hundred. Confirmation on that. That could be, that, you could have raised an issue. We replaced. Need to repay twenty-eight thousand dollars.
I know in the, the old corp, it's, it's said in there, add new fencing at Idlewild. So, I'm thinking we added fencing.
We replaced it.
No, I think we replaced it. I think it was part of a larger project. That wasn't the whole project.
It was replacing.
I thought we spent like sixty-five thousand.
We did.
We had to, because the fields had to be completely redone because they were unusable.
In twenty twenty-two, in twenty twenty-two, we rebuilt Idlewild Pickleball and Tennis Court.
Yeah, but there was an addition to the surface area. So, there was only a small percentage of the impact fees went to cover that project.
Who says it has to be used? I mean, who?
State statute.
State, okay.
Well, you don't have to use it. You just, if you're going to use it, it has to be used within ten years.
There is also some placeholders. I don't know if we've looked at those. Twenty twenty-five Calavera Park bleachers are twenty-two thousand, five hundred, which is probably an outdated cost at this point. So, that's my thing. If we use all seventy-three thousand dollars of our park impact fees, how are we going to cover other things as they come up? You know, we're going to use the rest of our Stadium District funds as well. Those are gone.
That, it concerns me that we're dipping in other pots.
So, then do we need to?
There's, there's a couple of those other funds that we could take a little bit from and not deplete our park. What were those? That was the Public Works Thinking Fund. We could take some. We could take some from the Trail Development Fund. So, we won't have to totally deplete our park impact fees fund, if I'm saying that right.
And I know it doesn't have to be specifically Public Works, but I, I'd like to see that go more toward roads or something like that. A little bit from the trail fund, a little bit from stadium, but I don't know. I, how, I mean, we have till twenty twenty-seven to use the current impact fees. How much more do you see us getting in the next few years?
That's really tough to say.
Yeah, I know.
So, we, we, I guess let's back up a second here because we, you see all the allocated funding for the project so far. We've been receiving funding for two years. And now it's time to, to make a vote on this? And we're saying no to it? Then why were we collecting money from all these people when, when we were in support of it?
I guess that would bring up my issue with this. We have an estimate here of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. And we have a project that's coming in at two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. We have eighty-two percent error in the estimate. So, when you have a plan, when you're this far over, you run into this situation where you don't know what to do. Do you bring up the extra money or what? But for me, the spread is too wide. And I understand that we have the alternate. I get that. The alternate is still fifty-one percent over the estimate.
It's, the, the number is not two hundred and seventy-eight?
The, the number is two hundred and thirty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, two hundred and seventy-eight is the bid without the alternate, right?
Let's hold on. Two hundred and thirty-one thousand is the alternative bid with putting stress on our Public Works Department, putting stress on our equipment.
Yeah.
Utilizing our equipment probably to its maximum mobility for a long period of time to move that much dirt.
Still a fifty-one percent error. And I, I'm not sure where the estimate came from. Maybe that's twenty, twenty-two dollars. So, my point on this is that, yes, it's in the master plan. And if this number came in at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, a hundred and sixty-five thousand, whatever, I don't think we'd be having this conversation. The problem isn't the number and the idea, or, excuse me, the problem is the spread. That's where the problem comes in.
Like you said, today's dollars.
I understand that. And that's where my point is, is that that wasn't factorinable or was not factored in, whatever. So, now we're dealing with this spread, right? And that's what's creating the, the problem here. So, I, I mean, personally, I, I can't support this with that spread. I can support the master plan, but not, not dipping into other budgets and finding a way to rob Peter to pay Paul. I just, I can't do it. It's not a critical function.
I think you hit it on the head because, again, I've never been critical of the actual master plan. I've been in favor of that. And in fact, I voted for it back in two thousand and eighteen. Mine is depleting, you know, our park impact fees. I mean, all of these different funds, using the rest of our Stadium Tax Fund to pay for this at this moment. Furthermore, if we don't go with the alternative bid, that is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. We go with the alternative, we put the Public Works Department in a hurting spot this summer. Well, we add additional workload. A huge amount of workload. Workload and, and.
Wear and tear.
Wear and tear on our trucks and everything else.
Andy, can you kind of refresh our memory? I know we discussed it a little bit last week, but the fifty-two thousand, that is not, that is including our staff time? That is not including staff time?
That includes vehicle fuel and the purchasing of the sand.
Oh, it doesn't involve staff time even. I thought it did.
Forty-seven thousand spread, some of that would be chewed up with staff compensation for, you know, the runs back and forth, right?
Well, we did not include any staff wages in that number. So, that fifty-three thousand is for the sand and fuel.
Did you figure out how many man-hours it was going to take to move that much?
Uh, it's going to take about a month. Two guys hauling, figured about seven hundred and ten trucks, five and a half mile round trip. And I'm not a trucking guy, so I don't know exactly. But we calculated it to be about seven miles per gallon for the truck.
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm just looking at that staff time that we're.
It's going to be, it's, well, it's going to be about a month of two guys hauling for nine hours.
How many hours? How many man-hours?
Well, that's eighty hours.
Man-hours because they weren't including staff time.
So, if, if you're saying a month for two people, you're looking at three hundred and twenty man-hours-ish.
If you did nine-hour days.
All right. So, three hundred and twenty by an average of how much?
We got to say loaded wage, so it's, call it fifteen thousand.
Yeah, it's like fifty dollars an hour probably.
That's another fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's good, it's nifty.
Anne.
We just didn't factor that into that.
So, you're talking roughly seventy thousand dollars.
So, we looked at that as an alternative to help reduce the cost of our project.
Understood. Now, when, when they were, were brought that alternate in front, is the plan, you'll bring in all this, there, leave it there, and then they'll start construction on the fields? Or would this be concurrent?
Uh, we were going to try it all ahead of time.
That's smart. Yep. Because otherwise, you're going to hold up construction and then there's going to be additional costs for general conditions, et cetera.
So, Trustee Romus.
Yes, sir.
If you don't care for this plan because there, there's a shortage, the, the gap is too big?
Yes.
How do you propose to shorten the gap?
Well, what I would do. Well, what I would do is I would go back, I would look at the costs. First, I, one of the things I tried to figure out is how we got to that estimate. I don't know if that was a carryover from an old estimate or whatnot. I would talk to the contractor, say, hey, um, what are we doing here that's moving us so far from this estimate? So for instance, uh, we may have something in the plan and we didn't realize that we were asking for something that was ridiculously expensive. Get the contractor involved, talk with the contractor to find out if there's a way that the cost can be cut without actually sacrificing the intent of the plan. And if it comes down to flat out money, then I think we have to, we have to relook at the scope, rethink the scope, reduce the scope, and get it to a point where it's affordable.
Cause remember, this wasn't even all the fields, correct?
It isn't. And another thing you could also consider is finding out which field is most critical. So we have like six small fields. We have, I, I, I see your, your, your questioning look. I get it. But you're not gonna immediately put the baseball fields in either. You're, you're gonna have duplicate fields. You're gonna have the new soccer fields and the old soccer fields for a period of time, unknown amount of time. Find out which fields are in the greatest demand. Are we looking at a situation where we need all six small fields and a medium field and a large field? Or is a real demand for a large field? Look at just that part of the puzzle. Say, okay, that large field's gonna call this. We leave the existing fields where they are until things settle down and we can generate enough money to do the rest of the project. That's how I would approach it.
What I remember from our committee meetings is the fields that are presented before us tonight were the ones that were recommended to be put in first.
But some of them are still there.
The club had input on that. Those, those are the seven, the seven ones that you have, those, the youth ones, the one larger one, that's what they mostly use.
So we're not, but my point on that one is, okay, it's not magically gonna become gone into softball fields, right? You're gonna have soccer fields at one side of the park, soccer fields at another side of the park for a period of time, because it doesn't include the entire project, right? So you find out from the soccer club, okay, which one do you really absolutely need? Find out what the cost of that one is. So you have all the options there?
Like one field?
Yeah, which?
That was the exercise they went through. So originally, the, the moving of the fields included eleven soccer fields. And we realized the cost would be too high for that. So the bids that went out were for seven, the, the top seven that they had identified. So they, they did go through that kind of process. You'd have to do four more later at some point.
So the fields down below where the new baseball or softball fields are gonna go in, were those part of that calculation? I assume it was because you have fewer fields shown or you have fewer fields priced than you have shown. So I think I'm getting what you're saying is my point.
Okay.
Okay. So you did that part. I, I guess I would continue on that and find out, okay, now you know you, you got these, which were really important, which is the most important thing to do. Right now, the, the money isn't there. It's like, we're, we're pulling money away from other accounts. We're doing all sorts of stuff to make this happen. It's unfortunate that we're at this time of existence with inflation and costs going up. We have to adjust to that. Do we take care, do we take money from roads to put soccer fields in, right? Do we take money from, we're not, but from?
Well, nobody's, you gotta be careful because nobody's saying take it away from roads. That's, I mean, we would never do that.
Yeah.
Well, that Public Works Fund can certainly go toward roads.
Trails then. So we heard, we sat here and listened. All right, I went to the, the Parks and Recs meeting where people came in and said, hey, how many trails have we built? None, you know, and they're very upset about that. So instead of now saying, okay, we're gonna put more soccer fields in, maybe we put a couple trails in, you know?
Where?
Where?
Find a place in the trail plan. We have a master trail plan. Do we not have a master trail plan? Okay, then.
I, I'm never for them.
I know you're not for trails.
So you can't blame me.
No, I wasn't blaming you.
Don't be blaming me.
I mean, you got an interesting situation here, right? So, so, you know, and you're, you're not the first person this evening who's mentioned trails and, and a desire from community members to have trails. And that was in a recent survey. I, you know, my question on this is, when this was cast, you know, are these needs that we cast in this comprehensive plan still the same needs that we have today?
I don't think they are.
And that goes back to the question you brought up earlier when we were listening to the amendment.
I mean, you know, when we cast this plan, we, it was a comprehensive plan. We took actions to go down the road of implementing our comprehensive plan. None, the least of which of the actions was most recently a visit to seventeen potential donors, but nine donors who have already committed dollars for a significant period of time. So we, as the Village of Swamaco, said, hey, community members, businesses, you know, would you be willing to help us out with our comprehensive plan? Cause these, this is infrastructure that we wanna build for the community and community members. And they said, oh, that's a really good idea. Yes, yes, we would be willing to support that. Now, as the Village of Swamaco, we're preparing to come back and say, yeah, no, we're not gonna do that right now. Well, why aren't we gonna? You, you'll have to wait your turn, sir, if you'd like to speak. My point is this. If, if we're not willing to do this, then I think we owe it to these businesses who have donated these dollars to explain to them why, and we need a good reason for it. You know, if you're talking about the dollars and not having the dollars, you're simply wrong. And it, it's clear that you're wrong. We have stadium district dollars, which are specifically earmarked to contribute dollars to community infrastructure that'll benefit the community. And you can look at the list that we spent on it and you can see the dollars that we've spent them, what we've spent it on, and it's all stuff that's contributed to the community. New zoo, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Public Works Thinking Fund, that's because we closed our engineering business that we had. That's leftover funds. It's been sitting there for years doing nothing. And anybody who sits here and wants to talk about Trail Development Fund, we've been talking about trails as long as I've been here since two thousand and ten, and we haven't put in one foot of trails, right? So if you're gonna sit here and cling to the idea that the seventy-five thousand dollars should be left where it is for trails, well, then I'm sh- show me where, show me where you wanna put the trails, because everybody shoots down trails here. So either give me trails or quit playing this, 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 this stuff. You know, we don't have the money. We asked the community. We, we, and, and I'm not necessarily saying I'm, I'm necessarily for this, but what I'm saying is either we need to correct our comprehensive plan so that we can be honest to the community members and we can be honest to those folks who are donating money and, and explain to them, you know, why we're not doing this, or we need to follow through and, and stick to our word, which was to do this comprehensive plan. To me, and I'll be done with this after this, to me, the, the biggest issue is, is do we need baseball diamonds? Is this comprehensive plan from two thousand and seventeen still valid today? Will those baseball diamonds be filled up? We know the soccer fields already are. Will the baseball diamonds be filled up? Because that's the end result.
Well, and the question is, what are, I, I go back to the question, those soccer fields, you know, are we filling them up with people from Swamaco? Or are they from residents from surrounding communities? That's also a good question. I'd like to know, you know, who their participants are with Howard Fire. Because last time we looked at it, or the last time I saw it, you know, majority of them were from outside, not even Howard and Swamaco. They're from Pulaski and other areas. You know, again, we are going to use the remaining balance of all of our park impact fees, meaning any other project we wanna do, that money has to come from somewhere. Stadium tax funds, we will expend the rest of those funds, correct? That are in that.
There'd be a balance, I think, of thirty thousand-ish.
Thirty thousand left?
Ish, yeah.
Okay. You know, relocate Calavera Park signage, so we're not gonna put the park signage up. We're gonna take the thirteen thousand dollars that we allocated for, for funds for park signage and put it towards these fields. Again, I think I'm more to the point that, I think it's a little bit of everything for me. I think I know where I'm voting. I'm voting no against this because I think there's too many question marks and things that we need to get done. And understand better. Does HISA, you know, can we create some, some leagues? Now, if we created some, some leagues for, for baseball, you know, slow pitch, adult, whatever, uh, through our park and rec department, I would be all for expanding our parks. And, and getting, you know, those ball diamonds used all the time, putting some lighting up. You know, I, I look at some of the other parks around and they're, they are utilized by adults, by kids, by everyone. Yeah, I've said enough.
So Alex, where can, in our survey that we have going out right now, there's I don't have that information in front of me and I'm sorry about that, but there was questions regarding parks, our parks to the community for that survey that we have ongoing right now.
Yeah.
And wasn't some, there was a couple of questions regarding parks and I know one question was, are you in favor of new parks? And usually that doesn't go over so well, but people are in favor of putting money into our existing parks. And I don't know if you're able to bring any of that up.
I don't think there was a specific question about adding new parks. It was like, if there are new amenities that you want, which amenities would you like? And of course, you get the splash pads, ice rink, dog park. But another discussion point is, you know, we really need to know as staff, is it simply a financing issue or is it deeper than that? Because there is an opportunity now with the Knowles Nelson Grant. That's the grant we went through the state, uh, to get the kayak launch installed. There is an opening now to apply for funding. You could apply for, I think it's a, is it eighty percent or fifty percent? Do you know?
I think it's a fifty percent match.
So in theory, we could go to Knowles Nelson and ask for fifty percent of this project. And if we were to get something like that, would that change your opinions and you'd be more in favor of doing it? And if not, that's great for us to know, so we stop chasing businesses and, and grant opportunities on this project. That's what we really need to know as staff is, is it simply a financial issue or is it deeper than that?
I, I think it's, for me personally, it, it, there is a piece of it that's a financial concern that was raised in terms of the additional man hours that would have to go into this. We don't necessarily know exactly what that number is. There is that concern. I would like to I would like the board, just as a general statement, to either say, yes, I'm for this comprehensive plan or by way of saying, no, I'm not for this, then let's redo this comprehensive plan. If there was the vote or the desire to redo the comprehensive plan, I wouldn't go after the funding. If we still feel this comprehensive plan is, is valid like this, then I think we should wait and go after the funding and see how that pans out. Cause I, I, I do agree that completely draining, you know, our funds, our seventy-three thousand dollars in funds, that, that creates a situation where, what happens if we need something else?
I wasn't aware of this other funding opportunity that you just mentioned.
Well, there's plenty of grants out there. We just the timing is awkward.
The trail fund, like you were speaking of too before, I mean, it we're gonna redo Lineville and that's something we need to consider.
Can we use that trail fund for some of that?
We can use some of the trail fund.
The trail fund is, uh, assigned, which means you can reassign it. So you could use it for Lineville.
So Lineville, I mean, that's.
We are funding a trail in there.
Well, seventy-three thousand dollars for a trail is gonna get you not, not too doggone far.
Well, yeah, but.
You're gonna have what you have on County J, which is a sidewalk to nowhere.
They're putting, it could help offset some of our costs.
Absolutely.
I thought the whole idea here was that we were, um, we wanted to, some additional time to find out if we would be losing some of these park impact fees and then come back and make a decision. But, I mean, the feeling in the room last time was we were leaning more towards, let's give it a year, give it an opportunity to raise more funds. Especially now that you're saying we have this opportunity, uh, to possibly get some Knowles Nelson, is that what you?
Yeah.
For Knowles Nelson grants. I mean, I think that's kind of the, the best way to go, the, the best course of action is to just give it a year, try to cause I, I mean, I think it is a financial decision. It's that sticker shock of it being so much more than we were anticipating. I mean, it has value, but it's a, a lot.
I, I agree with what you're saying, trustee Ward. I think the majority of the board is in favor of the plan. I think it comes down to financial. And I'll be honest, I mean, financial's always in my head too. And if we can get some additional funding from, you know, a fifty percent match kind of a thing or something like that.
Which is not, it's not guaranteed, but.
Yeah, I, I know it's not. I know it's not.
Don't know if you don't ask.
And I'm, I don't know how much time our grant writer put into this last year for this particular project.
Decent, decent amount.
Decent amount. I know there was that one opportunity out there from, I don't remember which one, uh, T-Mobile, I think it was. It was kind of a long shot one, but we, we didn't get that. So I guess what it is before us is, is it the plan or is it the funding?
I, I think the plan, again, I voted for it in two thousand and eighteen. I think, I think the layout is perfect for that particular park. I just, the usage also bothers me. When you have a club of just two hundred people, you know, we're moving soccer fields for them. You know, what would say is, what if we eliminated soccer fields, put them over here and got the ball diamonds going and then created some more rec leagues? I mean, there's, there's organizations coming to Nick right now asking for ball diamond space. You know, so I think the ball diamonds are, are a need in the community. Am I correct in saying that, Nick?
Yeah.
I mean, they'll be utilized by a greater population and then the soccer fields will be. But I understand you essentially have to do the soccer fields first if you're going to maintain Howard Fire Bean at these soccer fields.
If you wanna put everything in Idowalla too though, I've got some concerns about traffic.
Right. I mean, we have, we have the fields there already, right?
Yeah.
Two fields sitting there that are not being utilized at all.
Well.
Which, which ones are those?
Somebody was playing lacrosse on them the other day.
They play, uh, flag football uses them for practices, you know, the Swamaco area.
Right.
They don't play games there. They play at Neron.
No.
They do use them for practices. Yeah, recreational uses like lacrosse, seeing volleyball, you know, a couple girls, you know, practicing volleyball. So it's, it's open green space, you know, so it gets utilized some. And just had an, an adult Green Bay Eagles contacting me and they're looking for space. They wanna use Idowalla Diamond Five on Sundays. So we're trying to make that work. Or yes, we're working with Velocity, trying to make that work too. And those are people from outside the area, kids from outside the area. So obviously our base is HISA, which is Howard Swamaco Kids. So yeah, we want them to utilize our fields or parks as much as possible, but we do have other outside surrounding area kids, adults that use our parks as well. So it kind of penalize fire for letting Pulaski kids or O'Connell kids or wherever they may be is, you know, that's not we want people from the outside also to come into, into the Village of Swamco, into our community, shop at our grocery stores, fill up their vehicles.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm not disagreeing with that at all. But when you're looking at this kind of expense and then again, again, it comes down to dollars and cents, at the end of the day, you know, this was a lot more than we anticipated. I'm not in favor of taking two of our public works guys away from their summer work for a whole month. You know, what is the wear and tear on our equipment? I mean, I think there's, those are all costs that we may not directly see right away. But I mean, hauling seven hundred and some loads with our equipment is gonna put wear and tear on that equipment. You know, and, and we just went through that exercise with a new fire truck. You know, if we need a new quad axle dump truck or new drum trucks, that's gonna be expensive. They're not cheap pieces of equipment. So, you know, I, I'm in favor of, of the plan. I'm just not in favor of it now.
Sounds like, to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it, the underlying thing is the financials. And if we can get more in grants or whatever, donations, whatever, it, it seems from my position that it would ease a lot of angst. Yes?
Oh, absolutely it would.
So there's no reason why we should do anything right now. I'm, I would be perfectly fine with tabling this because I, I agree with trustee Rodden. I, I voted on the plan too because I think it makes sense. As far as spending the money, yep, it's a little bit of a sticker shock. If we could develop some more funds and make it more palatable, I think we should go forward then. But at this stage of the game, it, it's a little, little expensive for what it is. But I do think that we should fully explore any and all financial increases that we can get to offset that, that mark.
Could you also rebid it in one year?
Could, yeah.
Hopefully this, you get a more favorable bid a year from now. I mean, I just get concerned, I mean, we're talking about these other funds. I just think the, uh, taking from that Public Works. the, taking from that public works sinking fund, and to some extent, that trail development fund, are things short, in the near future, you might regret because you're going to have some road that needs emergency repair-
Lineville.
-that you didn't plan for, and you're going to have that trail on Lineville that you'd use this for. This might be a whole different scenario a year from now.
I still, I also agree that-
Or it could be completely wrong, but it could be more.
I also agree that we, we owe it to those with the, who've allocated funding for the project to give them a, an update.
Absolutely.
And let them know, we haven't abandoned this, we're still proceeding, but as well as you know, increased yada, 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 yada. We're exploring other funding options and we plan to go forward as long as we can get that. Who knows? They may even throw in a little bit more.
So, am I hearing things directly the direction you want to go towards, move towards, is that base bid? So, basically, if it was today, we'd be chasing ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Because we don't want to put the extra stress and wear and tear on our public works. So is that kind of, to give me an idea of what, where we're at as far as-
Yeah, because it kind of, it kind of comes out the same, because that fifty-two six, once you figure it in, wear and tear, labor, you're, you're up to ninety-nine anyway.
Because you didn't figure in equipment, wear and tear.
Nope, we only factored in fuel.
Yeah. And there, you can't tell me after seven hundred and some loads that there's not going to be tires and other things?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yes, the answer is yes. So, what I'm garnering from, from the board with exceptions is, is still support behind the comprehensive plan, but reticence in moving forward with this based on the financial aspect. And again, that's not, that's from some of the board members, not all of the board members.
And we're going to have to direct staff to, to help us out with trying to find bigger funding sources than just, you know, five hundred dollars and a thousand dollars here and there. You know, I mean, we're going to need some, you know, looking at the grant stuff where that can be some bigger, potential bigger monies.
I think you also can also, when you put it out for bid, I mean, doesn't, we don't have to wait a year to put it out for bid, you can put it out for fall work.
You could.
You know, and, and I think you could put it on the contractor to come up with some value-added engineering on their own part to say, and, and I'll, I'll open up the floor for you to speak, because I know you had a comment, but, you know, I see bids all the time that, you know, they go back to the contractor and, and say, hey, what other ideas do you have to get this plan done at a more cost-effective way? And, and there's always give and take, you know, but with government, it's always black and white usually when it comes to those bids. And I think we need to get a little away from that and go, what else can we do? We just did that with another project, I can't remember.
Well, the test well.
With the well. You know, they came back and they took some things out and they cleaned some things up and look at, we saved fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, over fifty. That was a one bid project though, so there was a little exception.
Right, but-
Right, I get what you're saying.
So, that's my feeling.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion to open up for public comment.
So, we have a motion on the floor to open up for public comment from the audience. And we have a second by Trustee Schneider. All those in favor of opening up for public comment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak on this, share your, what's on your mind, please provide your name and address and let us know what's on your mind. This is your opening, sir, if you'd like.
I'll make a motion to close public comment?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to close public comment and a second to close public comment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, with that, that takes us back to the item at hand, item seven B under Parks and Recreation.
I'll make a motion to reject the current bids as presented and look for future or additional funding sources.
So, reject-
Is that, does that work for you, Nick?
Yeah, you could just-
Refer back to staff for additional funding?
Yes.
So, there is a motion on the floor to reject the bids for Calavera Park soccer fields consistent with the comprehensive plan and to refer it back to staff to research funding, additional funding to support this aspect of the comprehensive plan. Did I say that accurately?
Fair.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a second from Trustee Romes on that motion. Is there any further discussion or questions from board members? This is a roll call vote.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Finrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm appreciative to everybody for the discussion. For some reason, it's, these issues seem to be the most difficult many times, and this was, lived up to that expectation for sure. Good work. Item number eight, administrative items. A, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three, amending the municipal code for telecommunications. This is a first reading. Administrator Kaker.
Yes, thank you. So, previously, the village board directed staff to craft an ordinance that would memorialize the rules surrounding participation via telecommunications at village board meetings. So included in this first reading of an ordinance, the main points are, a trustee calling in cannot vote, a trustee calling in cannot participate in closed session discussions, a quorum can only be considered by those in physical attendance at the meeting, and these rules also apply to all subcommittees, committees, commission members, and they will not be paid for attending remotely. There was an existing clause in our code that talked about special meetings that allowed telecommunications and you could vote. I did leave that in there, just in case there is an event that requires a quick special meeting, maybe there's a tornado in the village and we need authorization for spending, maybe you've got an administrator who's streaking down Lineville Road and you want to call a special meeting to fire that administrator, you want to have those options open to you. So I left that in there. The full text of the code is in your packet, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
I'm just thankful, given your example, that we don't have to worry about Trustee Ward, this being his last meeting, having to deal with that.
When I streak tomorrow, it's okay.
As long as it's after midnight tonight, it's okay.
There's another section of the ordinance that also deals with absentees or absences from meetings, right? There is in there, it's, it's in there, I can't remember how many, I think it's three, something, some consecutive number of meetings where a person is absent. I, I think this is a, generally, a well-done piece of work. I have several comments on here, but only like sticky little things, right?
Sure.
So, physically present, it says, a majority of the members of the board physically present. I think you should add, at the meeting location, because if I'm remote, I am physically present.
Are you, are you speaking about number three?
Physically present in Village Hall.
Too. Or wherever, and that's the thing too, is it references the boardroom. Now, if the boardroom is defined somewhere as the boardroom is always the location where the physical meetings occur, then I think that'd be fine. Otherwise, what I would do is I would put in there, at the public, at the public, at the publicized meeting locations, yeah, I'm doing it too now. Okay? Just something like that, because the boardroom is too specific, and at that point then, what happens if it's not at the boardroom?
I follow you.
So, my comments are all in that nature, right? Where it's more of a, you know what, it could be looked at this way or that way.
Okay.
And mostly, the, the boardroom part is more or less, there is, under three A, it says, under no circumstances shall attendance via telecommunications be used to constitute a quorum. I just wrote in those, I just removed under no circumstances shall, and I said, those in attendance via telecommunications shall not be used to determine a quorum. The under no circumstances just seems like a odd thing to put into an ordinance.
That second sentence probably is unnecessary. You could probably just strike the second sentence.
Fine by me too. But primarily, every time you saw boardroom, I marked up on my sheet here, it says, at the publicized recreation. In case, you know, something happens, we have to meet at blah, blah, blah.
Right.
And that's pretty much, in a part, I guess it would be three G, I struck any fees associated with this contact shall be at the trustee's expense. I don't know why that's there.
That was a copy and paste from the-
I would get rid of it, because that's just an unknown hidden cost, and there shouldn't be a cost to do so. Unless you're talking about, at any, any fees the trustee has to pay to make that connection. So if that's what you're talking about-
So you may have a trustee say, hey, I'm on a minute plan, and it, you know, I was charged.
That's their, that's their issue then.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's what this is.
I agree with you there, okay. So I was reading that differently. I was reading that as like, say, the village board said, well, we have to buy a new phone for this, or, you know, something of that nature. So that's why I was splitting that hair, but I see where you're coming from on there. It might be good to reword that, or just look at me as splitting hairs and ignore it, whatever. I'm, I'm okay. And then, it's just H, I just struck the word items. And then across the board, everywhere I saw, you know, boardroom, I just made the same comment. That's, that's all I had. Just a little bit of experience with remote meetings. I, I attended those while I was with my dad, more or less because I felt, I felt I should, right? But the reality is, is that, and I don't know if you feel the same way, Trustee Ward, but the, the communication level wasn't really great, just on the audio side, and that could have been on my end, right? I don't know if you've done them as well.
It was, it was difficult.
There's a pretty good delay.
Yeah. Then I don't know if that, if you had that same experience when you did the remote meeting?
Kind of the same way, just attending, because I felt it was better than doing nothing at all, but I wasn't appropriate to attend at the time.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they, communication's a little wonky. You, when you say aye, you have to say it about five, six seconds before you anticipate you're supposed to say it.
Right.
So it comes out right.
So, value to the meeting is diminished because of that as well.
Right.
That's, after going through that experience, I, I felt like it was really more of a, it wasn't really a great experience for everybody involved, so.
Sorry about that.
Oh, it's not your fault. Maybe it was. Were you doing something with the phone?
We were glad you were, we were glad you were on the line anyway, delay or not.
He felt guilty.
I'm glad we don't eliminate it altogether, though, because it's just for-
Yeah, I agree.
People who want that opportunity to still participate, understanding your vote, is not going to be counted, that you're not getting paid for it or anything, but you can still participate.
I agree.
So, when we talk about participate, though, when we talk about H, closed session, trustee is not permitted to attend closed session items via telecommunications, is that a particular reason that's in there? Because I think it's important, if a trustee wants to attend, especially close session, important closed session items, they should be able to attend it to make sure that they're up to date on all of the knowledge of a closed session item.
But still not able to vote.
Still not able to vote.
What if somebody within your house or whatever hears you, or?
So, so that was the, that was the talking point.
Great point.
Yeah, I think you missed-
It's, yeah, we talked about it, it's the confidentiality standpoint that you can't guarantee it if they're on the phone.
Then they'll just have to follow up with the administrator or whoever, yeah.
They just listen to the minutes or whatever, or get some-
There wouldn't be minutes.
No, there wouldn't be. They would have to get some-
They'd have to follow up with the administrator.
Yeah, you could have a follow-up conversation.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, good point.
Precise point.
And if there's a known absence coming up, maybe we don't do the closed session if it's not pressing.
Yeah, I mean, informing folks of, you know, you're not-
Yeah, if you know you're going to be gone.
Okay, this was a first reading. Any other comments on it?
Are we looking at striking some of those things that were brought up? Are you good with that?
Yep.
Okay.
So I'll bring back a cleaned up second version, it'll be a second reading at the next meeting.
You'll actually have it as a second reading?
Yeah. I don't think anything that we talked about is substantial.
Splitting hairs.
Thank you.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Item eight B, wetland mitigation bank update. Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So, Trustee Ward at the last meeting requested an update on the wetland mitigation bank. I spoke to Craig over at Ayers and Associates, they are finalizing the construction documents and the bid documents, and that should be out to bid in the next week or so, and we're planning on having those opened and ready for either award or rejection at the second board meeting in May. Construction will just depend on the dry weather season, which probably won't be until at least July, maybe August, and possibly even September. I wanted to give an update on the credit sales. So, we had five point eight three credits released to the village last summer or fall, and to date, we've made four credit sales, just over one credit in total. So the sales that are coming in are very small, they're point two, point three credits.
Can I stop you there real quick?
Yeah.
So those, when we have such small sales, like a point two-five or anything under an acre, are we able to still charge particular fees on those?
Yeah, so it's all, it's all been charged based on the maximum amount that we are able to charge.
What I'm, what I'm saying, if I sell two acres-
Administrative fees.
At one, yes, additional administrative fees, because that's, not that it's frustrating, because it's good that we're selling them, but, but, I mean, your administrative time is the same if we sell two acres or a-
Right.
-one acre.
Yeah.
So we should be able to allocate-
State doesn't let you.
Okay, never mind.
So, we have been selling them, and you can see, by just over a credit, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in, in revenue. So, when the credit sales do come, they are expensive, and I almost don't want to say it, because it seems too good to be true, but with the County M project, they're looking at potentially, I think they had listed as six credits, which is a substantial amount of credits, and they would be required to come through us, since we're the only mitigation bank in our northwest Lake Michigan basin. So if that were to happen, we would be able to release the rest of the credits that we have currently. So that's something to keep in the back of your mind.
For a reminder, what, what are we doing with those funds, earmarked to pull?
Well, right now, they're just repaying the expenses, and we're probably going to be doing that for a couple of years. And then after that, it's really up to the board, it will go into a, a separate fund that you can assign to wherever you would like, and doing the calculations on it, and based on the current credit values, the village is looking at potentially profiting nearly three million dollars off of this, but it's going to take up to ten years to get all those credits released and then sold. So it will be a slow drip, 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 unless you get these larger single projects.
So, if we, if the County, I mean, this, I guess we should have a separate meeting on the County M and the strategy to, and, and I think we probably should do that in, if we can do that in closed session, or even open session, because there's a lot of questions I have about that.
Could that be a-
That item itself.
Could that be a topic, because we have a meeting coming up with-
Yeah, I think we should wait until the county is ready to say, hey, we got word from the DNR that we need X amount of credits. I can come to the board and say, okay, here's what they're looking at. Do you want to give a discount? Do you not want to give a discount? We can have those conversations.
Because, yeah.
Either open or closed, because that would be a negotiation. So that was the update that I have for you. Happy to answer any questions. I know it's been a long time coming, but hopefully, we'll get this thing off the ground in the next couple of months here.
Seems like it's, seems like it's already off the ground.
What's our next release of credits?
We're receiving money.
Yep, so the next release of credits doesn't happen until the interim one as-built plans are approved. So we've got to get the construction done. We send in our documents to the DNR and the Army Corps and say, these are our as-built plans, can you confirm them? And when they're confirmed, we get another two point nine credits. So, then after that, there is a final construction that we have to do where we're planting the seeds and the trees, which is the next phase, and once that's done, and the final as-bills are approved, then we get another two point nine credits.
All I'm looking, my biggest question's around the County M thing, is just, you All I'm looking, my biggest question is around the county M thing is just, you know, how does it, how does it work for us to pay the other people involved to make sure that they're paid, make sure that we're paying our construction site, our construction cost, but also be able to maximize what we do with county M. Does that make sense?
No.
So we're not the only player in this, right?
Right. You've got the partners of Howard and you've got
No, no, no. We have partners with our land bank. So we have to make sure that, you know, every credit.
Partners.
Yeah, the mitigation partners. We give them X amount per credit.
But they don't get paid anything until
No, that's so, there's a percentage split that happens when we get revenue and they're not a part of the negotiation process in terms of selling credits.
I, I'll touch base with you
Okay.
later about my questions.
Okay.
How many acres again? Total?
Well, we have about ninety-some acres in the bank, but we have about fifty-eight credits. So one credit does not equal one acre.
We did, is it, is about ninety acres worth of space?
Yeah.
Land? Okay. So is it marsh or is it just wetland soils? Or will it become marsh or wetland soils?
So you're restoring old land that used to be wetland and then it was tilled and farmed. And we're restoring that back to the natural wetlands that they were.
So it would be a nice area for trails then?
No.
Okay.
It's a conservation area. I don't believe you can install trails. If you can, it would be natural. It wouldn't be like a paved
Okay.
pavement, but potentially.
That would impact
A lot of land.
That would impact the wetland area. So I don't know that you'd be able to.
You have to be very careful.
But you could use credits.
You could use your own credits.
You are very crafty. All right. Well, I'm glad to see that there's some revenue coming in from this. It's starting to move. All right. Anything else? If not, we'll move on to item number nine, which is planning and zoning. Planning and zoning, item A, request by Brian Netto, Ticks Harbor Light LLC, twenty-eight twenty-four Harbor Lights Lane parcel SU five-six-zero dash seventeen for a minor PDD amendment to modify the required setback for an open air pavilion located on the east side of Harbor Lights Lane, five hundred and eighty feet south of Harbor Lights Road. Zoning administrator, Dunks.
Thank you. We are looking at a point five eight, five acre site here. Um, the tavern was originally constructed in nineteen forty-five-ish. Not sure what zoning was in place at that time. Um, at some point, the property was zoned residential sewer. Um, in early two thousand and one, APCD, which is now our PDD, was approved of the property. Um, the staff report does show, um, the owners at the time had requested B zoning, so they had requested a full rezone. And through the process, it became just a PDD. No supporting paperwork was included. Um, with a PDD, any setback, use or other code issues not addressed in the plan revert to the underlying zoning. In this case, that would be the RS zoning as an accessory structure. Uh, this roof over the existing patio would then require a forty-foot building setback at forty feet. Um, then they have the issue of the fifty-foot setback from the ordinary high on the other side. Um, but they are looking at, uh, putting a roof on the patio structure that was constructed in twenty twenty-two. That roofed out does now create a regulated structure. Um, as a patio, there were no setbacks required. The patio is currently about twenty-four feet back from that right of way. Um, the tavern itself is only feet from the right of way on the northwest corner. Um, your planning and zoning commission recommendation was for approval with the three conditions of similar design to the submitted plan, to be constructed on the existing patio, meet the requirements of all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. Thank you.
All right, are there questions for, zoning administrator, Dunks on this?
Is minor an actual official word for a minor PDD? Are you just saying it's a minor PDD?
We're considering it a minor. If, if it was a major amendment to the PDD, it would require publications.
Okay.
And public.
That's why you use the word minor. Thank you.
Yes.
Judging by the picture that is shown right there, it looks like the applicant was, um, already had in mind last year of putting a roof on because the the pilings are, you know, pillars, supports are already in place.
There has been some discussion, um, possibly confusion from when this was originally designed. Staff does not have any recollection of him wanting to put a covered structure in here. Um, when we met with him with, I think fire was part of it. Were you part of it, Andy? No, can't blame you?
Nope.
Alex, um, somebody from the clerk's office. I don't, that was even before Michelle was here. Um, and our police department, we discussed through the liquor license process of what he needed to do for a patio. He claims he said he was going to make this a pavilion from day one. Nobody on staff has any recollection of that. But anyway, he does have the ability to turn this into a pergola too. Um, he could put a canvas roof over that, but with the, the wind and whatnot that he has out there, it just, it would just shred it, um, which is why he wants to make this a rough structure.
So voting for this tonight and then he can put the roof on?
Yes, this is, this is probably the final step.
Okay.
Joe and I have both agreed that we would allow it under our authorities.
Okay.
As a temporary use structure.
So I, I watched the minutes of the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting and a, a temporary use structure, is that still, what is it, a hundred and eighty congruent days? Is that still going to apply even if we give this minor PDD approval tonight?
Yes, that won't go away.
Okay, so it'll still be a temporary
This is a temporary use structure and as far as we are concerned, and at this time, that's for a hundred and eighty consecutive days. If we told him at Health and Safety, or I did, if he supplies us with documentation from somebody higher up in DSPS, which is Building and Safety, um, that suggests that this doesn't have to be consecutive days, that we would have staff discussions on maybe a hundred and fifty consecutive days and, or whatever boils down to. And then a couple of weeks in the winter.